All right, well, I want to thank everyone for their patience. The time is now six fifty. We'd like to call to order the open session of District one eighty-six's school board. We'll start with three point one, the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move on to four point one, approval of the agenda for tonight, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none?
Austin?
Aye.
Blissette?
Aye.
Lael Wolf?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
Okay, so moving on to my comments. Public comments will occur during the public comments portion of the meeting. The board will not allow interruption during the meeting. If you're interested in addressing the board, fill out the required public participation at board meetings forms and submit to Ms. Hammers. Please email your name, phone number, or topic of discussion or agenda item to boe@spss186.org if you wish to participate via telephone. All right. Looks like we have a guest with us here tonight, too, huh? So, one of the best parts of the evening, five point two, the student report. Ms. Thompson?
So recently, we had metal detectors put in at all three high schools. I will say it is going well. Getting adjusted was a little bit of a struggle, but now I think we're starting to run smoothly, and it's a very efficient process. And then I would also like to welcome Passion Hood, who will be taking over next year. And she's done great work on Superintendant Roundtable. I know she'll be a great student representative next year.
Awesome. Welcome, Passion.
We'll officially see Passion and have her family here at the August Board meeting, but yay! Very active on the student roundtable and in her school, as you know.
Janice, yes, we will miss you. You have been really just a great asset to this board, so we really appreciate your consistently being here, always providing some information, really giving us the students' eye view, so we appreciate that. And thank you for the update about the metal detectors. I think that that's good for all of us and for the community to understand how that's actually fitting into your day-to-day life, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, well, excellent work. Thank you so much, and welcome. Welcome. All right, so now we will turn it over to six point one, Superintendent's Report. Superintendent?
All right, as always, we're going to celebrate one eighty-six. We've had a fun month of celebrating. We had School Nurse Appreciation Day, and I just can't say enough about, especially this year and last year, the work that they did to help us navigate the pandemic, know what the right things to do were, the extra work and time, hours that they put into helping us track COVID cases. Just a lot of them worked second jobs in the community during this time, just to help our community. So I just wanted to give them a shout-out. When I talk about nurses, we have our school nurses, our, you know, RNs, our LPNs, but also CNAs that we hired this year that were absolutely vital to the work that we did. So we were grateful to them, of course, sent them out a nice letter for the whole district to see this is a cool picture of all of them at one of their small learning groups, PLC work. So congratulations to the surviving the year, helping us get through it. And Buffy, also to you for the work that you do. I really appreciate the service to our students in the district and the community overall. So the next, I'll come up with another one we celebrated here in a minute, but the Ennis Eagles at the Symphony. They wanted to kind of give you some highlights of something cool that they got to do, and a lot of our schools went out, but they sent a picture. They went out to the University of Illinois, the Sangamon Auditorium. It was phenomenal time for all the students who attended. But we, more importantly, we really appreciate our partnership with the Illinois Symphony Orchestra. A lot of you may not know, but that's why my mom moved here. That's why I am a Springfield resident, is my mom was a first chair violinist in the Illinois Symphony for many years. And that's what she did in college, and she was a music educator here in District one eighty-six at the same time. So my love for the Symphony Orchestra is, it's a big part of my life. I grew up watching my mom perform onstage. So for them to go and get to hold instruments and get the interest in, and then hopefully be a part of Starter Strings or play a musical instrument in middle school, the kids really look forward to that. We also got to celebrate Lampier on sports radio this week. I went very early one morning to meet with Sam Adonia. You know, my favorite thing is to get on the radio at six forty and seven fifteen in the morning, but that's what I do. But it was Mr. Doss and myself and Max Durker. And, you know, one of the things that we celebrated that day was the life of Arlen Loebur. So I was wondering at this time if we could take a moment of silence. He was a former teacher and basketball coach here in District one eighty-six, spent twenty-two years coaching Lampier Lions basketball, and then the rest of his life being the hugest Lion fan ever. So he does have his name on our gymnasium. It's the Loebur-Niak Gymnasium, and even though we're building a new one, that name will still stand. So if we could take a moment of silence and think of his family at this time. Thank you. The other gentleman on the far end of that picture is Max Durker. He's going to be the lead person from O'Shea Builders for the full remodel and comprehensive reconstruction of Lampier High School. And so he was there also talking about the timelines and how they keep themselves on time and how they'll manage all the subcontractors. And Sam always has great questions for us, so we had a good time on that radio show. But also that morning, it was sort of the Lampier Show, and we got to have a lot of other key people there, visiting secondary schools coach, Scott Metzke. He actually is the college and career coach there at Lampier. Picture here with Kayala Hawthorne, who will major in education and attend UIS in the fall of twenty-two, so we love seeing that. Dustin Bank hopes to attend UIS as well and major in education or law enforcement. He's still kind of considering his options. But thank you to UIS. They welcome the soon-to-be UIS stars on Twitter even, and we really appreciated that collaboration that they got to share, not only on the radio show, but also through UIS and social media. So we're really excited about that. Marsh Elementary School, we celebrated Walk-A-Roll to School Day. So after I was on the radio really early, I ran over to Owen Marsh to welcome all the families and students who were riding their bikes or walking to school that day. Thanks to Principal Conaway for inviting me. I had a blast. It was a lot of fun. You had to be careful, the scooters and bicycles were flying, but we had a good time, and it was just a way to celebrate kind of beginning of the summer. It was a, we had a break in the temperature that day because last week was a hot one, for sure.
Did you actually run from Lampier over to Owen?
That would have been a phenomenal feat, but no, I did not. I drove. But I do ride my bicycle a lot. All right, so we also wanted to celebrate our schools, our future, but before I start that, we also celebrated Trades Day last week. We sent out a memo to all of our tradesmen across the district and those that are working on all of our projects to say thank you for the work they do, but we specifically highlighted the Lampier's Trades Program as well. And, you know, that's just a, these days are just a way to kind of feel good and say thanks to the people that work for us. And the tradespeople might be some of the people that get missed the most because they, you know, belong to their own unions and they work in our buildings each and every day, but we wouldn't be here if it weren't for them and the work that Darrell and I ask of them sometimes is last minute, sometimes it's hot and hard and all of those things, but we appreciate them greatly.
If I could interject, they also had, I was listening to some of the Sam Adonia show that morning, some of the trades guys. One of the kids, I think, has already secured an apprenticeship with Labor's four seventy-seven.
Yeah.
So, right out of school, he's going to get plugged in and...
Yeah, and as I was coming in, they were wearing their orange t-shirts.
And the real good thing with getting them that early is, you know, you get seven-year younger bodies than your average apprentice, and they can get in, get out, get their pension, so it's good for everybody.
All right, moving on to, this is the new entrance for Blackhawk. It's coming to fruition. We always like to show you some really cool pictures. The crews are finishing up the exterior paneling right now, and you can kind of see the new main entrance to the school. Butler is getting faced, so this is the scaffolding and the platform there as the masons put up the brick. Very impressed with the color of the brick and the design matching the rest of the building. It looks really sharp when you drive by, and I love that they started the front first so that when you drive by, you can see that. But they should be moving to the north side of the building by the end of this week. On the right, you can see the hallway of the lower addition, so they're inside and they're working and getting up drywall, and you can see they're in the process of muddying that and taping it up. DuBois is one hundred percent, the masons are completed their brickwork. The new canopy over the main entrance is being installed as we speak, and it's kind of facing the south side of the building, but also you can see how the brick matches really well, and they put all of the little touches on the line, so it seems very seamless. I love it that it doesn't look like we added on. It just looks like a part of the building. The next picture is Fairview Elementary School. This is the almost complete fifth grade room on the left, and then this is a new circulation desk in the library as they are finishing the touches on that building as well. Sandberg, this is the outside exterior that they're bricking, and again, it's matching quite nicely, and it's almost a perfect match. And then just another, and they've been inside drywalling and doing all of that work as well. The windows are in, so things are moving along quite well. When you drive by, you can see that they're working on the principal's addition off the front with the main office and the overhang for the buses. This is Franklin Middle School, just kind of from the street view. The crews are working on cleaning up the site now, so that's a good sign that it's almost done, doing some finishing touches inside, and of course, then they'll deal with the front lawn. Right now, it's a big mud patch, but we have to find the right time to plant and seed and do all of those things, but there will be landscaping that comes along. Grant Middle School, this is off the back of the building. It's the south side of the addition. The masons are making good progress, matching the brick at the back of the building. This is the multipurpose room on the right, and they're putting on the tracks for the dividing walls, so things are moving along. So we're, you know, every day, we finish one more thing, and then sometimes we have a couple setbacks, and then we move forward, but things are moving in the right direction. This is a really cool picture. Whoever took the picture on the right should get like a photography award. That is beautiful. But this is the stairwell that the students will go up and down between the first and second floor, and then also the elevator is at the other end of the hallway. But they did a really cool design with it being kind of a half circle there at Jefferson, so that tree is going to be beautiful to look out over when kids are going up and down the stairwell. They call it a radial staircase. The roof is now over that stairwell, so roofers can complete the roofing process, and then they'll be able to dry in the building so that they can start the drywall process at Jefferson. I was over at Washington last week and got a great tour. This is the photo of the first-floor corridor, and you can see the detailing of the soffit area in that corridor, making it look very nice. The right is a photo of the multipurpose room with the drywall almost finished, and you can see the architectural details starting to take shape to make it look really cool when you're in that multipurpose room that is attached to the cafeteria. These windows on the right side of the corridor actually look into that multipurpose room. That's going to be a really nice touch, give it a lot of light and openness. Lampier High School, this is the area that used to be the band wing. It's now completely torn down. You can see them demoing that and getting and removing all of those pieces away, so the work has begun. It's really disruptive parking, but I know that that's a hard part, but thanks to the EPA, we're using their Lot C now, and that was very, we're very thankful to them to be able to use that. Southeast Auditorium is looking awesome. So this is the view from the stage. If you were on the stage looking out kind of the left side of the auditorium, the drywall's being taped and mudded, and they're going to begin painting soon, so it's going to be awesome to see that come to fruition, and obviously the seats and the flooring and new curtains and all of those things that are going to make it look awesome, but more importantly, an amazing sound system, brand-new sound system. Lampier Lions had a great alumni open house. This was a picture that I just adored. Class of nineteen sixty members came together and toured the building. I have another picture of the lady with the white blouse on that found her locker on the third floor and is standing next to it. She still remembered. I have been good, dear friends with the person that's right next to Artie in the orange blouse as well. Mrs. Dirksen was somebody that was a mom at the same elementary school that I went to school with, at DuBois, so I've known Mrs. Dirksen for years, but just to see the joy on their face from that. So thank you, Mr. Miller, for that suggestion, because it has been eight years. Did you go on Saturday?
I went again, and it was an even bigger turnout. I think they had a couple hundred at the first one, but this one, all over Saturday, there's probably five hundred people there. And the Football Boosters Club greatly appreciates all the traffic because they did just a great business there, selling shirts and stuff. Also wanted to point out, that's one of my favorite English teachers when I was at Lampier, Mrs. Holmes, right over, let's see, Artie's left shoulder back there.
Oh, right here.
And recognized me right away. I don't think she's aged a year, and I actually used to have hair.
You used to have hair, but...
Now falling apart, but she's holding up pretty well.
All right. Well, that sets the end of my celebration slides tonight, just to give you a little hint of what's been going on. We have a lot going on right now at the time of year. We're getting ready to gear up for even more work as we finish up all of these projects over the summer, but Mr. Shaver promises me we're on track. We're on track. The biggest thing is that Washington and Jefferson, I went personally and met with the lead superintendents and said, we have to have our cafeteria and our rooms open. So if nothing else is done, we'll have all the cafeterias back at those schools because that's been a, I just want to applaud Mr. Turner and Mrs. Crump for handling that so well. Not having cafeteria, actual space to sit in this year has been quite a challenge, and they've had to think differently. And I'm going to thank Mr. Doss and his amazing administrative team for all the work that they're going to do to kind of rethink how to have school down in the Edison Wing and part of the Lampier Building next year, because it'll be different, but, you know, no pain, no gain, I guess, on some of these projects, but it's good work. And Darrell, thanks for your tireless effort, and Mr. Grossen at the back for ordering things and being on track and getting everything ready to go and giving me the updates. I just appreciated it greatly.
We will not close ever again.
Ever again. I may have been quite adamant about it. It's all good. All right, I have a pleasure of just having a great update for you by our Horus Man, Rising Star, Dalton McGee. Come on up. Let's give him a... Okay, so yeah, he teaches biology and physiology, and a little chemistry, too, or anatomy?
No, thank goodness, no. Not chemistry.
Yes, but he's an amazing teacher, but also he's the coach of our district esports team. One of our first attempts at looking at, what can we do district-wide to bring all three schools together to co-op into one sports team that represents District one eighty-six? So he just wanted to give you a very successful end-of-the-year update on esports, and some of his members are in the crowd, too, that I know we'll get to meet. So I'll let you go ahead and go on to the next slide.
Yeah, thank you Superintendent Gill and board for letting me be here. I will try not to take up too much time, although I'm the storyteller that tells a story four times, so I'll do my best. So a lot of the board wasn't here. Last time I got to talk to you guys, it was before COVID, and then everything was online, and so I wanted to give you sort of an update. That was a where-we-were, where-we-are, where-we're-going type update and give you the key points of what's been happening. I went to California right after I turned twenty-one, and I saw the Overwatch League for four days, and it was the first, like, real professional, robust esports league that was out there, and I fell in love, and I was still in college, and I just thought, like, man, I wish we would have been able to do something like this in high school. Fast forward to student teaching with Jason Potter at Southeast, and I approached him and Mr. Williams and Mr. Devoe, and I said, hey, can we just, like, start a club? Can we do something? And we put an announcement about it on, and we got a hundred and twenty kids walk into Mr. Potter's room that day, and that was more than any team had tried out. And it was suddenly, quickly realized that this was going to be huge. And then I got hired at Lampier and said, oh, let's do it again. And the exact same response happened at Lampier. And by this time, I was getting emails and phone calls from Springfield High kids and parents saying, why don't we have esports? And it just became obvious that this was something that was needed, but it wasn't feasible to buy three labs, to buy three uniforms. All that was so much, and that's kind of what inspired the Capitals and putting this district team together. We reached out to LRS and wrote a heartfelt letter about what we wanted to do and why we wanted to do it, and they gave us ten thousand dollars to get started, and that's how we started. We also partnered with a group called ZeroGen, which gave us jerseys and pants, all for free to all of our kids. You know, we talked about the importance of equity and why we wanted, you know, no matter where kids came from, we wanted them to not look like they didn't have all the cool uniforms, and so all of them got it, and they bought in. And lots of schools followed our lead all across the state, which sort of leads to this Illinois High School Esports Association, which is separate from the IHSA, which is sort of the confusion that's usually there, but they have a year-round program, different titles. Essentially, we have six sports teams, all with varsity, JV, and freshman levels, with their own schedules, their own playoffs. It's all happening all year, and it never really stops, and we've had a lot of success there, which I'll talk about in a second. And then COVID happened, and so my first introduction is Matt Lehman, who's here. He was our first club president. Our student executive board is elected by their peers, and he got elected, and then we, where COVID started and then he got elected. And we needed to have a way to keep our students engaged, keep their grades up, keep them invested in the season, because we were one of the only sports that could keep playing through COVID, and we did. And we found success. We got third in state in one game, second in state in one game, third in state again in another game, and that was all happening through COVID. So that was our opportunity really to grow and have those relationships we built. I've got pictures and memories up there of kind of what it looked like. David Yee was a class of twenty-twenty there. He was our Capitals Hall of Famer that year. Every year, we pick one senior, no matter how many good candidates there are, as our Hall of Famer. We're going to put their picture up in our new esports room. And then Grant Thompson is here also tonight. He was a class of twenty-twenty-one's Hall of Famer. And then we'll crown our twenty-twenty-two Hall of Famer, May twenty-sixth, at our awards night, which is going to happen at Springfield High School. I know a few board members of RCP, and they're going to join us there. I'm really excited to see you guys. But that's where we were. So if you could go ahead and go to the next one. Where we are now is IHSA has joined the party. You probably have heard about it, but IHSA formerly sanctioned esports, and we got second in our sectionals, and we went to state and got ninth in state. And it was awesome. We played really well. We now have nationwide recognition through our participation in an organization called NASEF and NA-CAD, which is just more acronyms, and I know that we love that in education. But in those conferences, I got to speak to a larger audience about leadership development and what the Capitals have been all about, and now we have colleges reaching out to us and saying, hey, before we pay money to use those resources that give us information on esports athletes, we're just going to call the Capitals and see what they have that year. And that's awesome. And we've sent a handful of kids on full rides to college. We've sent even more on half tuition and partial scholarship, and that's not an accident. It's an elite group of kids. It's the coaching staff that cares and admin that have supported us since day one. Right now, we're in the middle of our Olympics. You can see that up there. It's a fundraising event we do where we raise money. Teams across the state compete in various titles and earn medals, just like the Olympics, and then it's just this cool, fun, bragging rights tournament that people have got really into, and the logo rocks, so I'm happy about that. And then I mentioned we have our awards night coming up, and that's where we recognize our seniors, but give out awards, some honorable, some dubious, to our players, and we recognize our seniors. We picked our Hall of Famer this year, Mr. James O'Hagan from the Wisconsin High School Esports Association. He was driving seven hours down because he wanted to speak to our kids, and he's coming to give a keynote to start that evening about why what they're doing matters, both to the parents, the kids, and the admin, and I'm really excited to hear that. So that's kind of where we're at right now. And then moving forward, what our plan is, next slide, please, thank you. I'm very grateful, we're going to be compensated, the coaches, heading into our fourth year. It has been a labor of love, but it's been a lot of love, and I have one of the best staffs ever, and I just sort of wanted to shout them out because there's six of us, and they've done it all. Anything I've asked, they've made it happen. COVID is gone, quote-unquote, and we're looking forward now. Kaden Rios is here. He is our newly-elected Capitals president for the upcoming school year, and Raymond Dolan, right next to him, was the last year. So Raymond was running the show throughout only COVID, and that was his brand, is to keep us successful, keep us surviving. Kaden's brand is to keep us moving forward and growing. And so we have, you know, all kinds of great kids in the program, running things. I sit back and let them do what they need to do to get real-world experience, doing similar types of meetings that you guys are getting right now. And then because Lampier is being renovated, as we just saw, and because my room's been shaking for two weeks, we are moving because we, our esports room at Lampier is not going to be usable during the renovation until the new one comes at Lampier. It's going to be a new state of the art esports room. For the time being, I'm happy to say we're moving to Lincoln Magnet, and I'm proud of Mr. Grossen's work, working with Principal Hyen and everybody else that's been a part of that process to coordinate, but we're excited to move over there to Lincoln Magnet, let the middle schoolers see what esports is all about, get them excited. Maybe they'll start their own club. You never know. And it's a beautiful space, and I'm excited for our kids to get to continue to compete. That was definitely a concern of mine as this construction was happening. And then the goal moving forward, now that IHSA is involved, now that more CSA schools are joining, Rochester's reached out to me asking about how to get started. U-High has a team, Glenwood has a team. We just want to be what the CSA is for esports. We have been up to this point, and we want to continue to dominate competition, but also set the example. We just went to Chicago for a state finals event we didn't make. We got beat in the round right before the finals, and our kids wanted to go anyway, so we did. And all people could talk about after that event was Springfield brings the party. We weren't even there, competing, and our kids made sure that was an enjoyable event for everybody, because that's who they are. So that's the plan moving forward, and I'm glad that it's been able to survive COVID and move on bigger. And as I'm obligated to say, we do at the end of all of our streams, as TiVo says, make sure you do your homework, kids. So, yeah, if there's any questions, I guess I could take them, but otherwise...
I guess you know why you're the rising star, though.
Right.
I just want to commend you for recognizing the need and then running with it, because I think we would all agree that when we can get these kids interested in something like an extracurricular, we're more likely to keep them. So kudos to you for giving us a chance to keep, what, three hundred-some kids?
Yep.
You know, and some of these kids, it might be the only way they go to college, so, you know.
I appreciate it, and it's cool because the equity is such an important core component of the Capitals, and we have, you know, Grant played tennis and ran track, and Kaden is a wrestling captain, and we have kids that don't do any other extracurriculars, and all of them come together and build relationships that otherwise would never have existed. And we have great friends that were Southeast freshmen and Lampier senior that are now inseparable best friends, and that will be, that's the legacy, I think, of the Capitals, is the relationships. So I'm proud of that.
I have to say that, we've had this conversation before, you hit all of my buttons. Biology, those are, that's right in my wheelhouse, for sure. Running raids in World of Warcraft, like, I understand the major, it's true, I do run raids in World of Warcraft. I understand the pieces and the parts and the leadership and the camaraderie and the teamwork that has to go into play, so it's definitely something that I'm super excited that our district supplies and that we are really engaging our kids in that endeavor. Don't sell yourself short. Mr. O'Hagan is coming seven hours because you inspired him, and he made that very clear to us when he sent us all an email about what you give to the children in our district, and we really truly appreciate it. There's no reason you're a rising star.
And, you know, as an esports parent, like, the way that Coach McGee captivates these kids, first of all, it is hard to get a sixteen-year-old to do anything, okay? But if Mr. McGee says, hey, you need to do this, they are jumping at it, because he is such a role model to them that they don't want to disappoint him. And if you could please tell them to clean their rooms?
I got Connor to cut his hair. I'll try to get Josh to clean his room.
I just want to second what they both said, but also, you know, not only what you've done to captivate the kids on the esports teams, but just period. I know that you're an excellent teacher, and, you know, we hear nothing but good things. You're very deserving of the Rising Star Award, and as much as the timing of COVID has probably not worked out for you, I think it was the perfect time for esports, because it was one of those few bright spots that was just flourishing while everything else was kind of stagnant and we're waiting to get back to normal. So it was, you know, again, kudos for having the foresight to put this together and the grit and the drive and determination to keep it going.
Thank you.
And cherry on top of the cake is that he's a cutsman.
I am. My gamertag is Wrigley, so I just want...
We won't hold that against you.
I want this to be a reason that a parent would choose to move to Springfield.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's, that's what this is. And esports, you know, people always say, well, they're not real sports. Well, neither is chess. It's, but it is, it is a sport. It is not an athletic, and it's changing these kids' lives. And, you know, I know one parent, their kid moved from Pleasant Plains to come here because we had the Capitals. And so I want more of that. And hopefully it keeps happening. Hopefully our brand is out there, and this new esports room is going to be a real nice piece of cherry on top there to prove that.
And you gave me one of the coolest shirts ever, so.
Yeah, if you guys want Capitals gear, you just got to send me an email. We'll make it happen.
Now I know.
Maybe I'll break it out on the 26th.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're done with it? Well, I mean, it's hard to beat something like that, and congratulations for all the hard work. And again, you know, I agree. Anything that we could do to keep students engaged is a very, very big positive. So again, thank you so much for all you've done. All right, so we will move on to 7.1. Old business. Do any board members have any old business they'd like to discuss? All right. All right, we're going to move on to 7.2. Appointed for discussion is the Legacy Point Sports Complex. That's something that has been, you know, is in the media. So Superintendent, I think you got a little statement first?
Well, I just, we heard a presentation last week, and we gave you some information. Obviously, we're still working with legal department and next steps, but if you have any specific questions as individual board members, you can either email them, or you can ask them of me tonight. Just, I'm not going to have the answers, more than likely. But Mike, Mr. Miller and Mr. Mars are going to sit down with me and the developer here in the coming weeks to ask those questions, or dig into them, or ask legal those questions. Obviously, we want to give you the time to understand the commitment and, you know, think about the next steps for this, this project and our community. So I just wanted to give you a chance to ask any questions of me tonight, and/or you can email me at a later date.
As a board, we received some information from the superintendent. I believe you got some more information you'd be able to share with us. You know, we had mentioned, you know, Mr. Miller and I, and several board members. I think all of us have additional questions, not, you probably are not going to be able to answer.
No.
But, you know, as far as, as far as the, you know, the whole project and the development and the commitment that the district will have to, you know, as we go forward, you know, what responsibilities or what obligations they might have with us. You know, there's some terms with regards to, you know, some contracts and things like that. So I know that, you know, Mr. Ringer kind of started this a little while ago, asking questions. I had a chance to go through the information that Superintendent, you know, shared with us. I have many questions, okay? So, but I, you know, I know that, you know, I could ask you, but you don't know them. So I think that, you know, once we get a chance to sit with the developer, it's going to make a difference.
What we gave to the board for transparency was a letter of intent that the Legacy Point gave to us. And so our legal department has that right now and is going to make suggestions for the board. But they wanted to do so after having all your questions as well, so that they can kind of knock it out in all one, you know, and answer all your questions and give us feedback on the letter of intent. And then we can also sit down with the developers. I think they're actively interested in answering our questions. But that was an overview at the last meeting. It was a lot to take in, and so I wanted you to see the letter of intent that they actually provided that next, very next day to us, and then we can, we can go from there.
So not knowing the timing of when you might meet with the developers, I do have also a list of questions. Some of them are going to be difficult, I'm sure, but I want to have my input in those lines.
And I think something that's worth mentioning, and we've all kind of been talking about, you know, what do we think about this, this commitment? What do we think of the prospects of this development? And I think generally, everybody is supportive of it. You know, there's been a significant investment out there. This is a unique opportunity for District 186, but we are all keenly aware of the potential unknowns with the, I guess, commitment, you know, for multiple years, extending maybe a couple decades. And so we're just making sure that it's the best decision for the district, for the students, and then also not overextending ourselves.
Well, I mean, this is a topic that has to come to open session. That's why I invited the developer the last time, and, you know, so I guess just provide the questions, and then we can provide a follow-up report in open session, you know, answering all your questions and giving you the information. But it is a significant opportunity for our whole community to have something pretty cool that would build economic development in that sector, but also across the whole community with hotel usage and space and all of that. So that's why it's interesting to think about.
Well, definitely applaud the idea of moving forward. You know, part of, part of this is, you know, the reason that, that the developers come to us is because, you know, there are issues with regards to property taxes. So I believe that all of us have questions, you know, going forward with regards to that. So, you know, that's, you know, and obviously, property taxes for the district, I mean, that's, that's how we pay our bills. So, you know, as we go forward with this, you know, I know that several of us, all of us have questions.
Yeah, I applaud the idea when I expressed this in the meeting we had, but just going forward, let's not forget about building infrastructure on the east side. I know we always want to guarantee towards one side of town, but there are kids on the east side of town who also need to get to certain locations and be afforded the same opportunity as everyone else.
Totally agree. And so I guess I see this as an opportunity, you know, with our tax dollars somewhere as, say, it's history, not quite the same, but, you know, when we have our facilities money and we have opportunities to invest this wisely, this is also another investment that we should be considering. So there's just a lot of moving pieces.
Go slow, go fast, just to make sure all of your questions are answered before we bring anything for you to vote on.
Well, thank you for the update. Are there any other further questions? All right, we'll move on to 7.3, new business. Do any board members have any new business they'd like to bring forth, Board? Seeing none, 7.4, the review of the school board policy updates. Are there any questions with regards to the policy updates?
I did want to just mention one of these. And I'm not quite sure which one.
And these are just drafts?
Right.
Yes, they are.
So under the...
Recommended by legal.
Under the interrogations and searches, and a lot of this is just updating, you know, just routine updates that we make. But I noticed a section on metal detectors. We heard briefly from Thompson about how they're working at Lanfear. I didn't know if we had just a brief update on how those have been going.
Yeah, like, Mr. Wen, I couldn't thank you enough, and Mr. Grosson, who's back there getting a shout-out tonight for the work of, you know, getting these installed and set up. And we had to, obviously, go through all of the ups and downs of having something brand new and making sure everything's installed correctly. But I think we're in a little bit of a better working process every day that goes on. So, Mr. Wen?
No, I'd agree, and I think what Janice said earlier is really where we are. There's some learning curve to using these devices, both for adults and for students. Over the last week and a half, two weeks now, the learning curve has gotten a little bit less and a little bit less. And so we are progressing and moving forward on these things, getting kids in the building quicker, into class in a timely manner. And it's just about, you know, making sure that people understand what is going to be able to go through pretty seamlessly, and what's going to get them stopped and searched and all those things, just based on what they're carrying in the bag. The more stuff they have in a bag, the more chance they're going to get stopped, so.
So the computer comes out of the bag?
Computer comes out of the bag, and we do a pass around with the computer. Janice, do you have, you want to speak to anything else that may come out of that bag?
I think, yeah, computers. Sometimes, like, I've found that binders will, like, set off the metal detectors as well, so it's helpful to, like, smooth that around if you can.
The three-ring binders are big because they get that metal, the metal bind in them.
It kind of depends on the brand, too. Some of them are real metals.
Does it depend on the size? Like, if it's a three-inch versus a two-inch versus a one-inch?
The bigger the binder, the more chance it's going to, it's going to signal.
Mr. Wen, I know Springfield High had some glitches that first week. Did we work out those bugs?
They're worked out. They're working them through. They've gotten much better about what's going on there. We have actually ordered an additional detector for the school because of just the number of bodies they have there.
And the entrances, the way that the entrances are.
Right. So they're doing some things there to get that improved, and then staffing-wise, they're working on staffing to make that work. The other two schools had a, they had a little bit different setup, and were able to bring people through in a different manner, that you can take as much to get them in, and so. Mr. Grosson's worked pretty intently in terms of trying to organize this, to get people to come in specific doors, and how this is going to look, and what they're going to walk through, and so Springfield High is coming along.
So the entryways, say, southeast would be less challenging than over in Springfield?
Correct.
The southeast entrance is just very wide, and all three of them can be set up. Just go in, it's a little different.
In Lanfear, they're using the commons area, and they have all three, all three set up in the commons area, but they have ample space to walk in the door and around to pass the metal detectors, so it is a little bit easier to do. Whereas Springfield High, you have some commons doors, you have annex doors, you have a southwest entrance or southeast entrance, so multiple entry points and trying to get those things organized in those places.
So overall, let's talk about the successes. It's been rolled out about two, three weeks now?
Yes.
What are the biggest successes you've seen?
I think the big success is we're getting kids in in a timely fashion, and everybody's being checked. That's one thing that, you know, we were doing random number. We were doing a lot of different things to get kids into the buildings earlier. Now we know everybody's walking through these, and, you know, everybody's being searched throughout the day.
And visitors that come in as well.
Visitors are being searched throughout the day. So, you know, all those things are very positive. In, you know, in terms of things that we found, contraband and those things, we found some things that, it's just like any other day. We would have found them doing bag searches and those things, but this has allowed us not to search every bag going through, and we found items that shouldn't have been in the building, so.
Yeah, I, thanks for the update. I just want to reiterate, you know, as the landscape of security changes, you know, we're just going to continue to look for ways to evolve with it. And I know Safe to Help was recently back in the news. I think it's been codified into state law. And it's just another tool that we've got. So the more layers we can add, the more tools, it's only everybody's benefit.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm trying to add my piece in. No, you can.
No, please do.
So being at... Speak into the mic, maybe you can.
Thank you.
So being at Southeast High School, I can also tell, like, we're definitely, like, getting into the flow a little more. Like, we get passes now if you're late for checking in. And we're definitely a lot more understanding, as well as just being a student in the student body. The violence has definitely decreased a lot. I haven't seen, like, any, you know, physical fights, any arguments in, like, I want to say, like, three weeks. So I feel like with the implements of these... Right. But it was like, I just wanted to include that piece in there. Like, it's been pretty peaceful, so it's definitely doing a lot.
It's been a flow. Thank you for that.
All right, well, we definitely appreciate the input. It sounds like...
And I guess, you know, you mentioned contraband, and I bet you the next question's going to be, oh, what contraband? Vapes are going to set that off, so vapes are not allowed, and so don't bring your vape, and don't use a vape. I like that to begin with.
Let's start there, yeah.
But if you bring a vape, it, you know, it could very easily set off. The other thing is, some people get mace for their own security in the community, and we understand that, and that's a family discussion. You see a lot of young ladies that will carry that when they're working late at night, maybe walking to their car. Totally understand that. However, at school, we cannot allow mace to be in the building. If it should even accidentally go off, you drop it, it goes off. It could be a health issue quickly. Mace does have a metal canister inside it. That's how it's held, so it is pepper spray. We don't, don't allow mace in our schools for that reason. So I, you know, I, I know that that's something that we've had a little bit of an issue with going on.
Right. And we've had mace and pepper spray and all the variations of that, of that device that have been found since we started searches in classrooms. And early in fall, we find those things frequently because they're on keychains and everything else. But they do set the metal detectors off when they go through, and so they are, we are pulling those and having those conversations with kids and working through a discipline process.
Talking with families.
And again, that's why it's part of our discipline handbook, is next time around, it's actually written very specifically in the handbook, so it's there.
I have a question about the policy, about the married and pregnant students. The home hospital instruction piece, is that similar dovetail right next to, looks like the one for kids with, like, chronic illness, like our oncology kids, those kinds of things, it works and functions the same way?
Yes.
They have to get that piece of paper, they have to sign that waiver, talk to their physician, all of that is the same?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's enhanced greatly, though, the services that they're getting because of our online capabilities and our technology. So it is, it is really a good, robust instruction.
Okay.
You know, but we have assigned teachers, though, that check in and help them with specific instruction, but then they can also do some work on their own, at their own pace through our online opportunities. So back in the day, it used to be just an hour with a teacher, and they would come to their home, but now that's expanded with our opportunities for remote, so yes.
And we can offer hotspots if we need to, or something to that?
And we still do to often laser in.
I just want to make sure there was some, it worked similar, because I know the chronic illness one seems to have a strong foundation, and I wanted to make sure that this was similar.
It is through, it's the exact same folks in the district, they call Maple, so it's the same program.
Thank you.
All right, well, we will move to public comment. The Board of Education and I encourage public comment and public participation in board meetings. However, it is inappropriate for any person to name a student or individual employee, including designated employee by a job title, rather than name, in open session. If any public commenter wants to address issues related to an individual student or 180, or District 186 employee, that commenter is invited to contact the board office or any member of the cabinet prior to public comment. It is not the intention of the board to discourage any public comment in any way, rather it is the intention of the board to address issues regarding individual students and employees in an appropriate manner. We thank you for respecting the privacy of our students and employees by following this rule. District 186 streams board meetings on YouTube, and all content posted there is subject to YouTube's content guidelines. Springfield Public School District 186 continues to encourage public comment. Statements made by the speakers during the public comment do not represent the views or opinions of the Board of Education or Springfield Public School District 186. All right, so this evening, we have one commenter, Clarice Hatchet. All right, if you could come on up to the podium.
Ms. Hatchet, you'll have three minutes, and it will be up here, the clock will be up here on the screen.
I have no glasses on, so I cannot really see that. So I'm a little... Sure, it's sweet. I am the same way. First of all, my name is Clarice Hatchet. I have two students, three students. Two have special needs. They're on the spectrum. And so the reason I'm here today is in regards to the transportation that they receive. They're, they have ABA therapy, and there are several ABA therapies here. This particular one is at the Old Doctor's Hospital. The reason that we have chosen that one is they have a special program where if the child does not have insurance, or they do not have adequate insurance, they will actually still see the child and have them do the ABA therapy, which has worked wonders. I, my, one of my children was not speaking at all. She now counts to 23. She lets me know everything. She knows her ABCs. She can, I can hold up anything, and she can tell you that's what it is. And she follows me around the house and talks, which is what I wanted. So the reason I'm here is that we were having issues with the transportation. Her, where the bus is and where it's located is literally right there on the street. I see buses go down through there, and there are no buses that can pick them up, is what I've been told. They, so we've had, come to an issue, because I work, I work for the hospital. I've been there for several years, and I work about 12 hours a day. So the reason, again, that I am here is that I felt like the district, that our District So, the reason again that I am here is that I felt like the district, that our District 186 children are not really going to be allotted the same as this would be Chatham District. Because they, some parents cannot go and get their children. Some parents can't do that. And so, we did a, it was a back and forth from several places. I even contacted superintendent's office to know with no success. So, I'm not really asking for the, the line to be moved back. What I'm asking for is that buses are allowed to pick up students if they happen to go there that are in the district. They are, what I did notice is that Chatham schools, if kids are going out there, and I don't know their story. But if children are going out there, that Chatham will pick those children up, and they'll bring them to District 186 schools. They're doing that service for them, their children. And so, I just felt like that our children should be able to have that same, have, be afforded that same opportunity if they manage to get in there because we all know that the spectrum diagnosis is going, is on the rise. There are plenty of children that have it.
That is time.
Thank you. And believe me, my, my heart goes out to your situation. Just to respond briefly, and Mr. Thurman, I see you taking some notes. We are continually kind of fighting this alongside you, not against you. Okay? It has to do with the reimbursement for transportation from the state of Illinois to our school district. And oddly enough, even though Lee School, which we're going to hear from in a minute, is just down the road, there is a, a boundary line there. Doctor's Hospital or Lincoln Prairie and all of the work that they have there is actually sitting inside Chatham School District. So, there's a, our buses can't go there and get reimbursed for that service. So,
But their buses can come into our area, and they do? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess if you're a Chatham student and you come out there, then you go back to Chatham School, that's reimbursed through the state of Illinois for that bus service?
This child doesn't go to Chatham School. This child goes to District 186 School. I actually pulled up and saw the bus there, the same bus that was getting that child. I saw that same bus when I was picking my own children up, pulling up to pick, to drop off another child, and it was a Chatham ball chat.
Once again, we're, we're fighting that battle alongside you. So, if we can figure it out, we, we will. And I, you know, we've got the best people on it, asking the right questions because I understand your, I understand exactly what you're going through and that you want the bus for your child. So, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And saying that. And we'll, we'll be in touch.
Okay. Thank you. And completely, I know my three minutes is up, but hi, Mr. Nguyen.
He is, he is pretty awesome.
That's awesome.
Mr. Nguyen, that's a lovely shade of red you got there.
A little shout out for Mr. Nguyen.
All right. Well, kind of looking forward to this. We've got a presentation at board on teaching and learning from Isles and Lee Schools. Superintendent.
All right. Well, I've got Lee up first in the PowerPoint. So, Mr. Kuchimuski, if you'd like to come up. Mr. K, as they call you in school.
I respond to everything.
His fine pictures on the wall right there. He might have the same suit on, by the way.
I was gonna have same tie, different suit. I like blue, so. So, yeah. Hey, good evening. I'm just saying good morning. But hey, everybody. So glad to be here. I've been Lee principal for 10 years. So, I'm honored still. I love to serve. And thanks for letting me still do it. I love my job. So, that's us. We just had a field trip. Our Life Skills students went to Southwind, which was a major do after three years of kind of not going anywhere. But we made it. It's a great picture. Anyway, that's us. So, I was told brief is better. So, please feel free to, if I skip over a bullet point, you know, catch me. That's okay. But as you, as you know, Lee has three programs. Just as a quick overview, we have about 260 kids. Our enrollment's actually creeping up to where it started 10 years ago, which is good. But we have three programs. We have a K-5, regular ed, elementary school, like many of the other ones in the district. We have two pre-K classes, and then we have eight life skills classes. So, we serve students age 3 to 22 and, and beyond. Feel like it's from birth to, you know, to, to old age. But let me just roll through some of these. And like I said, feel free to, to stop me or ask me anything. We've, we've worked really hard at Lee. It's definitely been a year of adversity, like it has all the schools. But my staff is great, so I want to just give them a shout out. We have about 100 staff members at Lee. So, we're like kind of the little school at the south end of town. And then it's like, whoa, all these people work there, which makes it fun and also a challenge. But it's great. So, attendance, I did want to highlight that. We, we, I mean, everybody's had attendance challenges. Our ILT looked at some attendance data, and it was just really poor. Before spring break, we were at 79% attendance for many, many reasons. But we worked really hard. We did phone calls before school. We tracked attendance daily outside of classrooms. And we, we set a goal. We started at 80%. And we went 1%. And every time we met our goal, we celebrated. We'd do popsicles outside or whatever we did. Anyway, we made up to 92% attendance. So, that's pretty great. I wouldn't say that was today's attendance, but we're, we're, we're still fighting. So, but it was a whole school effort, and that was every classroom, pre-K, life skills, everybody. So, that was, I'm proud of that. Some great Title I things going on. We just had our buy one, get one book fair. And so, every student got a whole bunch of money to spend. And so, you know, during pandemic, we delivered books home. We flooded kids with books. But it's different when you get to pick your own books, right? So, the whole school got to pick, and that's again, every student, you know, 3 to 22. And it was great. The third graders, I have a picture of it later. The third graders picked right before lunch, and they got to recess. And then they all come pounding on the door. And I'm like, what are you guys doing? And they said, we want our books. We don't want to play. So, they all came back in, brought their bag of books and sat in the shade and all read. So, that was really great. And also, we had an author visit this year, and every student got a copy of that book as well. And literally every day, somewhere at Lee School, somebody's reading that book, might be waiting for the bathroom. So, just some really good stuff. Kids EM, our second graders went to Kids EM. We definitely made our mark for sure. It was really, really fun. I went three times to the Kids EM, and it was, it was great. What a good partnership. So, we're happy to be a part of that. Just inclusion, I have a picture of this later too. But post-pandemic, just getting back to our Life Skills kids being able to go around the building and do their vocational jobs, that's, you know, kind of without being able to go out and do it, we got to do that in-house and delivering fruits and vegetables and just all their kids mixing. Just general, for improvement, collaboration, both academically, socially, we just, you know, we're, we're an avid school, and we work, we got pretty good at that. You know, kids working together and talking things through and, and, you know, it's just been difficult the last couple of years and with the social distancing. So, we're getting back to it. So, we're definitely focusing on that. Like I said, both academically, socially, having kids link leadership together, you know, taking somebody that's maybe struggling and putting somebody alongside them that might be struggling too, but, you know, giving them an opportunity to lead. Also, I want to point out that second bullet there under opportunities, our Life Skills program is actually getting new curriculum. It was slated for this year, but the rollout has been, you know, difficult with everything. The, the year didn't start out like normal, like we, you know, kind of hoped it would. But we're getting there. We're getting trained in a couple of weeks. We're getting trained for Stars and Link. So, that's, that's a big deal for Life Skills. So, all right. So, goal two. Yeah, there you go. So, we focus on a culture of calm. We've done advisory period for several years at Lee and focused on social emotional learning. Second step, this is our third year doing that. We had pretty much all of our teachers pilot when we had the chance. So, we, we take a lot of time to set up the classroom environment, the culture of the school, and everything's calm. You see it right when you walk in the door. There's a big pillar that says calm, just to set the table for kids so that they're ready for academics, ready to learn and ready to take care of each other. So, that's a big focus for us. Celebrate All Differences Spirit Week. This just happened a couple of weeks ago. Stephanie Oll is our Life Skills Speech Path, and she organized a, an event because like I said, we could kind of finally do something. And we're so used to at Lee, bringing all the programs together because it's, it's just good for all kids, you know? It's good for littles and bigs and Life Skills kids and regular ed. So, anyway, we had a whole Spirit Week, and each day we celebrated, you know, a disability or something. It was super great. I'll tell you more about that at the pictures. The Book of Pride has been just a cool thing. It's not a new idea. Several schools have it. But it's just this idea that whenever kids make a goal, and it could be literally like I made my check-in, checkout goal for the first time, or I went up to reading levels or whatever. So, we celebrate those kids, and we do it the Lee School way because when they come, it's a party. We get on the radio and say whoever's available to come, we play music, we clap, we ring a bell. It's great. We've had kids from all the programs do it, which is cool. You know, seeing a non-verbal kid, knowing their reaction and knowing what they're feeling, even though they can't speak it verbally, they can tell you. So, that's been super fun. And, and we're just a little weird. I'm, I'm weird and wild. So, you know, I just get everybody, even kids that might be in trouble. I'm like, well, you're going to come celebrate too. You know, you're still a part of it. So. Partnerships. Partnerships, we have a longstanding partnership with Lakeside Christian Church, which is still going strong. They have blessed us tremendously, blessed our kids. So, that's awesome. We are reigniting partnerships with Walmart and UIS. UIS is right down the road. We've worked with them for a long time. But now we have them back, and their kids can come back, their students too. And Walmart, I can say we just got a Walmart grant, the Sixth Street Walmart right by our school. So, we awarded the Walmart Community Grant just yesterday. So, really excited about that. We're going to Avid Summer Institute this summer, so we're going to keep working on that. And then that last bullet, under self-regulation, we looked at our Panorama data, and that's one area of growth looking forward. Kids are saying still that, you know, our, our scores dropped. As far as if you ask a student, you know, once you're upset, can you calm yourself down? And it's not where we want it to be, right? We see the difference as adults, but if students don't have that perception that they can calm themselves down, then it's not going to happen all the time. So, we're going to keep working at that for sure. All right. And quickly, I know I'm trying to go fast. So, we, we, I mean, it's our mandate at Lee, you know, it's one of the collective commitments for the district. But equitable opportunities for all. If we don't care about that at Lee, then I'm not doing my job. So, just want to roll through these pictures just real quick because they're great. So, there's our bell ringer. So, there's our pride book. Like I said, ring the bell. We, we just grab every adult. Parents sometimes are sitting there, and they get up. They're like, well, I guess I gotta do some or dance. Our custodian will come and lift kids up. And so, that's a great thing for us to do. Next one. So, this is, these are our Life Skills kids doing their vocational tasks around the building. They do recycling and pass out fruits and veggies and sharpen pen. They do all kinds of stuff. And it's really cool to see kids, you know, from all over the building that really, you know, a third grader has not much to do with a, a senior, right? But they do at Lee School. It's really cool to see. They, they all know each other, and they take care of each other. So, it's really cool. Couple more. Oh, this is our, so this was, this was Wacky Wednesday in our Celebrate All Differences, and it was Crazy Sock Day, and we had a sock hop because we were celebrating students with Down Syndrome because they have an extra chromosome, and chromosomes are shaped like socks. So, that's what, that's what we came up with, and it was cool. You can see on this left picture here, Kenyatta and his teacher Kenyatta is graduating here shortly. But having a good time with a fourth grader, and we just all got together and had fun. So, it was great.
One more thing.
Sorry. Hope I'm not going too long. This was, this was when, these are our third graders that were outside that literally banged on the door and called me to open it. So, they're looking good. And I think there's one more. That's from the book fair. And then, yeah, here's all our attendance effort. That kind of red angled sign there on the bottom, that's what we track every day. So, classes track about 9:20. We make sure Ms. Lawson and I, Ms. Lawson, my fabulous principal assistant, so thank you for her as well. We go and check and do all that. And like I said, we draw on the chalk and just have fun. So, all right. That's all I got.
I've had the pleasure of going to Lee School, and it is my, I have to say, it's probably my most favorite school environment because of the inclusion. Because of the inclusion, because it's littles and bigs working together. I love what you said about we're ready, we're all here today to help take care of each other. And I think that is such a strong philosophy, and you see it the second you walk in the door at Lee School. So, thank you.
I definitely second that. I, I think when we passed out that candy, that's probably one of the most fun things I've done since I've joined the board. Like that was one of my best days. So, just seeing all those kids, like they were so excited. And like you said, they all knew everybody. And, you know, it really just made it feel like home, I guess.
I would agree with everything you said. I've known you since you came to this district, and you're assistant at Harvard Park. First came in here. You're the perfect person for this building. You're, you're just a beacon of hope and positivity for these kids and teachers. So, thanks for what you do.
Yeah, I just wanted to say there's always been a really good vibe there. And I think one of the last visits I had, it's been a couple of years now, but it was Family Reading Feast, I believe.
Yeah.
It was interesting. I went, I went to Ms. Stab's room, and she just threw me right to work, put me in a table, it was a dinner card. It's, it's all hands on deck, and there's just a good vibe and good atmosphere. So, you're doing a great job.
Some of the biggest classrooms in town too. It's awesome out there. All right. Up next is Isle Schools, and we'll have just as much to say about you. Don't worry. I had an opportunity to visit Isles the other day and see their re-envisioned library as well. It is beautiful. Has flexible desks now, or like they're taped, they push into tables. And they have this really cool, like place for the younger kids with all this really nice furniture. So, once again, it's just a great environment. And so, I'm excited to tip off Isle School here. And that's a really cool picture.
Thank you. I took that picture myself, and.
You need to go into photography.
I just loved everything about it. And that tree, you know, always brings me happiness when it's blooming. So, I just had to get that, that shot. Someone else had taken a picture like that years ago, and you know how you use the old picture, use the old picture. And it's like, okay, a lot of stuff's changed. I gotta take a new one. So, so I did do that. I am just so excited to be here with all of you. I'm Kenyatta Rebell. And like Nathan, we started together 10 years ago. So, it's kind of nice to be able to do this presentation the same time that he is. In addition to that, I just wanted to say, as far as being prideful, I can't say enough, Dalton McGee was in my first grade class. So, just getting up here or watching him be a rising star, and I know he hates me telling this story, but when he had to leave after first grade, and he, I think it was my first year, and, and he said, I'm feeling very sad about leaving. And I said, it's okay. I feel very sad too. And so, as I walked into the door, I just said, it's okay to cry. We both cried. And then I said that to him. He said he didn't remember that at all. So, I was like, well. But he did just tell me some other memories that he had. And I'm looking at Janice and can't stop smiling because Janice was one of my babies from first to eighth grade. And so, just watching her grow over the years, I'm just so thrilled. And I see Robert over there, and I saw a couple of other of the esports children. So, I was just like, oh, my babies. So, I just wanted to tell you, I know a lot of people hear us talk about International Baccalaureate and are just wondering, what is that? And what, you know, so I thought this might be a good time to just kind of explain it a little bit. So, Isles is a gifted magnet school for first through eighth grade. But in addition to that, we apply to be what's called an IB school. It's a world school. We're authorized. We go through this huge evaluation. And believe it or not, even in the middle of COVID, we actually were still asked to be evaluated. So, we get evaluated every, like when you first start, it was four years, and then it was every five years. This is now, or we just passed our second evaluation in the middle of COVID. So, we had two evaluators. It was a remote visit, which you can't even imagine what that's like to have to videotape and bring things to people and try and meet all their standards and benchmarks for an evaluation remotely. But we did it, and we're very happy to say it was successful again. So, that's always a good thing. This year, we actually had an author come, and we did a mini writing conference. Her name was Shannon Anderson. And our students, every, she did like a kind of keynote on Zoom, so every child could see the keynote. And then she worked with the grade levels one at a time. So, every grade level got to do something different related to writing, and it was really phenomenal. This is our second year trying a read-a-thon, and we set a goal of 100,000 minutes. And as you can see, our students surpassed that greatly. And it's just so exciting to have children actually excited about reading. And one of the prizes, I guess, was like, you can have lunch with the principal if you get to 1,000 minutes. And so, I, when they tallied it all up, I had little people walking by me going, I'm going to have lunch with you. And I was like, that's great. And then it was like 52 of them. I said, whoa, there's not 52 days left. So, we will figure it out. But it was a good problem to have. So, I'm very excited about that. Reading tutoring, we basically looked at our numbers, and we said, you know, with everything that we saw, and especially when you have first graders that were kindergartners, that were on Zoom a whole year, and then they're in person. And there's just kind of a lag. So, we extended our support so that we did first graders and second graders in need. We have a retired teacher who's helping them three days a week with reading. As part of the IB program, an inquiry cycle was a recommendation that they, the evaluators came up with. Not that we hadn't been using inquiry cycles, but they really wanted us to implement a school-wide inquiry cycle. So, that's something that we did this year, and we're pretty proud of that. We have Lego Robotics League. I know that says Lego League, but our, our league progressed to the state competition this year. And so, that was pretty exciting too. Get on the next slide. Our Scholastic Bowl went to regionals and got second place. We've had so many students do the solo and ensemble. So, artistically, we had children with the Scholastic Arts. We have speech contests. We're the only school that does have a speech contest. And so, we are really excited about that. I don't know if you can see it, but if you enter Isle School and you look at the stairs, you'll see languages are listed there. We have at least 22 different languages spoken in, in our school for our children. So, that was a definite point of celebration. This year, if you looked up US News and World Report, we were ranked sixth in the state. So, we thought that was also something we should mention. Obviously, we want to continue to develop. We want our children to all get to meets and exceeds on IER. And we want to make sure that our new teachers understand the development and what they need to do to be successful IB teachers. If you get to the next stage, this was the one about social emotional support. And so, one of the things that we have is called a learner profile. It has 10 attributes, and I like to call them TOPBRIC. So, that's like an acronym, acronym to help our children remember that. So, T is. So T is for thinker, O is for open-minded, P is for principled, B is for balanced, R is for risk taker, and then we have two Rs, so R is for reflective, I is for enquirer, C is for communicator, C is also for caring, and then K is for knowledgeable. So these, um, no matter what kind of IB program you go to, those ten attributes are going to be kind of the core of what children are expected to be and how they're expected to behave. And so that really does help us a lot because I tell people, before I can remember having issues on the playground and you'd have to be like, "Ah, what are you doing?" And so, and then when we had this common language and we were able to say things like, "Is that very principled? Was it, let's be open-minded and let's be communicators and let's be principled and let's see if that, if we can talk about this in a different way." And so since the children all know the same language and they'll say, "No," and so it's just a real nice way to be able to um, to deal with all kinds of issues and have everyone kind of on the same page. The social emotional skills, as you know, I mean, we integrate everything that we're learning. We think obviously, social emotional skills are so important this year and I think everyone can tell you that everywhere you go and um, I think we've done an amazing job as a district in trying to support all, all our children, but we also know that we have been able to incorporate some of the IB approaches to learning in that. We, when um, Nathan was talking about the, the scores and we looked at our scores and saw that emotional regulation was an area that we really needed to grow in and so we started just trying to do things more with growth mindset and um, you know, you can do this even if it's um, difficult or you're not, or it's, or you're not happy with it or something like that, so um, that's something we're still working on and I think sometimes a lot of people think that um, gifted children have everything going for them and not always, sometimes that's um, we say asynchronous learning and that emotional regulation is some of those things that a lot of people don't realize that we do deal with a lot. So I'm going to the next slide. And you know, our point of pride is really just that we create a rigorous global learning environment where students will become active lifelong learners by using their skills to explore their passions and if you look at the little pictures, you can see um, the different students exploring and um, I'm gonna go to the next page, 'cause I just put a bunch of different pictures there. We have an Isles Community Garden, um, which is open and available for the community. We have a book box, again, open and available for the community and we also have a um, micro pantry, um, that's there for the community. If you look, you can see the second graders in October did socktober and um, you know, they, they donated socks for the mission, um, the Washington Street Mission, because a lot of times socks are really hard to come by, so um, so that was, taking action is a real big part of the IB program and so you can see in the middle, there are some fifth graders that took, gave up their lunchtime so that they could write uh, Valentines to the veterans and then there's a little girl on the left that cut her hair and she said, you know, she wanted to help cancer victims and so we just tried to take different pictures and have them on our action wall and I'm gonna stop talking and just say, "I'm so grateful for the opportunity to be here with all of you and to talk about Isles and come over anytime, so thank you."
Kenyatta, I have to say, um, you know, I'm a fan. I, I, when, before COVID, I would call Kenyatta every once in a while and say, "I need an Isles fix" and you know, she's always very welcome, you know, to have me come over and you know, part of it too, and she was always very gracious, but the kids are so much fun there and, and so willing to share things with you when you come, you know, they want to show you what they're doing and so to me, that's an exciting part of, of coming to Isles is how much the kids share and I, and I think Isles is a prime example of how a school of choice can coexist in a public school system and you know, and Kenyatta knows this, we've had this discussion many times, I am a proponent of school choice, I think it's important, you know, in, in a public school situation and, and I think by us doing that, we've kind of uh, cut the, cut the tide of charter schools trying to come in because we have so many different schools of, you know, for parents to choose from. You did a great job there, thank you for what you do.
I want to say, uh, you guys, both you guys done a great job. I actually went to both the schools, Lee and, and Isles, so just happy to see that that it's like that enthusiasm, energy is still alive. Now, when I went, it was kind of gift to school, but you know. But you know, it was the fifth and sixth grade center, but um, you know, and I had a great time at Lee too, so great job to both of you all.
And, and also, you know, it's funny, that was another visit I'd made just before COVID, it was one of the last ones, I think it was the Chinese New Year celebration and I could not believe the amount of people that showed up, I mean, the place was packed. I mean, I'd brought our whole family, our girls just got a kick out of all the activities and the little uh, necklaces they were able to make, so well done, it's another really good vibe and you know, it's probably representative of every school throughout 186, now they've all got these just great family little vibes, keep it up.
And Kenyatta, I know your, your school families had a loss um, this past, well, two weeks ago now with losing Amy Taylor, but she was such a vital part to your musical program and all of the work she did there to bring music into the IB program and, and really serve your school, so our hearts go out to you and, and of course, we, we set a moment of silence at the last meeting, but just remembering her this week has been important, we honored her at the retirement celebration as well. I emailed her, her husband this morning and just, just thinking about you and your staff as well.
Yeah, I got my start in Chopar at Isle, three of the sixes, yes.
I'm gonna need to see that a little bit later.
Agenda item.
Seventeen point nine.
Alright, well, thank you, a, a lot of great information there and thank you for sharing it, for coming out this evening, look forward to this. Alright, so now we're gonna move to ten point one and I'm sure Mr. Osborne is really gonna dance this, right?
Mr. Osborne, we're gonna give him a little shout out. Jason and I had an opportunity to play golf to support the um, Boys and Girls Club and this man drove the green on hole thirteen at Bun, over the water, up the hill, we're looking for his ball, it's on the green, so I've never seen anybody do that. Mr. Winn and I are still like talking about it today clearly, can't hit the golf ball. I know, it was good, I know. All for charity, all for charity, but it's, it's a big deal.
Yeah, I, yeah, you're, your mouth is talking, but I don't understand, a word is coming out. I'm with Buffy, yeah. Smile or not, smile or not.
But we, we didn't, we didn't finish well, but yeah, I know, it's all good. Alright, business report.
Thank you Superintendent. You know, it gets more and more difficult every week to follow the amazing things that are going on in our district. I'd like to make a formal request that we move business report in about one second. You know, it, it's fun to come and be here and, and see the stuff that goes on in our, in our buildings on a day-to-day basis. We see the invoices that come through or the payroll and stuff, but um, I get excited just listening to Kenyatta and Nathan tonight, um, I, I definitely need to make sure I get out to their buildings and, and that's what happens every single week and I feel like I let some air out of the tires. But we're gonna jump right in. Superintendent, thank you so much, President Mars, members of the board, I present to you the business report for the May sixteen twenty-two board meeting. For the month of April twenty twenty-two, the education fund and the operation and maintenance funds report is as follows. The monthly education fund revenues were eight point one million and the education fund expenditures totaled ten point six million. Expenditures exceeded revenues by two point five million for the month of April. The year-to-date Ed Fund revenues have exceeded the expenditures by seven point two million dollars. The operations and maintenance fund revenues for April were just under six hundred and fifty thousand dollars and expenditures were one point one eight million. Expenditures exceeded revenues by five hundred and forty thousand dollars. The year-to-date O and M fund expenditures have exceeded revenues by three point three five million dollars. For the investment balances report, as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, the district had a combined cash balance of fifty-four point eight million in the bank for all funds. For the operating funds, the Ed Fund, O and M, transportation and working cash, total cash in bank was twenty-three point seven million. Total investments were one hundred and eighteen point six million. Earned interest on all cash accounts for the month was just over three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. The interest rate on all cash accounts on April thirtieth was point three five percent. The total balance of cash and investments for the funds as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two was one hundred seventy-three point four million dollars. For operating funds only, the balance was twenty-three point seven million. The district also shows county sales tax proceeds received during the month of April as six, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, excuse me, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, again, that's for the January collection period. Total collections thus far for FY twenty-two are eleven point four five million and total collections of just under twenty-eight point eight million. Superintendent Gil, President Mars, members of the board, this concludes the business report for activities occurring during the period of April first through the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Well, looks like we got some great news there and uh, you know, we want to thank the uh, all, all the Sangamon County and, and anybody purchasing in Sangamon County, the sales tax helps everybody, so uh, thank you, thank you so very much. Alright, we will move on to eleven point one, Superintendent, we have consent action items.
Yes, President Mars, members of the board, I recommend approval of consent action items eleven point two through eleven point eight as described in the corresponding resolutions.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none?
Mr. Shaver, could you please turn the lights on?
I have one job.
You have a multitude.
Trying to keep us in the dark, huh?
I just can't see very well. Blissett.
Aye.
Leowulf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
That is seven i-votes.
Alright, we will move on to twelve point one, approval of personnel recommendations, Superintendent.
Well, I have to follow Tom and I just want to say, I don't, I don't have half the personality, so I apologize. Can you move me up? Before him.
Before him, yeah, there you go.
President Mars, members of the board, Superintendent recommends adoption of the personnel recommendation, that's presented.
So moved, second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Leowulf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Blissett.
Aye.
That is seven i-votes.
Alright, we'll move on to twelve point two, approval of resolution to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget, Superintendent.
Um, I'm gonna just recognize Sarita, she's at the back, Mrs. Slott, principal. After that last vote, the principal, Southern View, not that you weren't this year, but you were interim, so thank you for the good job that you've done and for your selection to be the, the permanent fixture at, at Southern View, so thank you so much, your leadership is noted and you did a, had a great public hearing for us this year and everything, so thank you for being here and we wanted to recognize you and also in that same vote, you made Mr. Osborne the actual uh, business director so that, you know. Not interim any longer and we also did uh, see Katie Heimlich become the guidance dean as well and she was unable to be, she just had a baby a few months ago. So we will uh, move on to Mr. Osborne to read the resolution to amend the fiscal year budget.
Thank you Superintendent. Whereas a vote of dedication made from time to time, funded necessarily to amended budget and whereas section seventeen dash one of the Illinois School Code provides for such amendments and whereas the district has more accurate data because of the updating of certain information, which became available after the original budget was approved. Now therefore be resolved to amend the school district's approved budget for FY twenty-two and be it further resolved, tentative amended budget be made available for public inspection in the school district's office located in nineteen hundred West Monroe Street, Springfield, Illinois for a period of not less than thirty days, beginning the twentieth day of May twenty twenty-two and be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Board is directed to cause proper and legal notice of the availability of a tentative amended budget for inspection to be published and be it further resolved that the public hearing on a tentative amended budget be established for six thirty PM on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two and be it further resolved that at any time during this period of examination, the tentative amended budget that is on file might be further revised or amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
So any major items that we're, we're revising here?
Some of the revenue has noticed spike in the sales tax and some of the other action items that we had with CPRT, um, so it's a lot of revenue adjustments and some small minor expenses to revenues, so that's correct.
Alright, seeing no further discussion?
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Blissett.
Aye.
Leowulf.
Aye.
That is seven i-votes.
Alright, moving on to twelve point three, approval of a change order for Grant Middle School, Superintendent.
Hey, Mr. Shaver, pretty much has the next three.
I'll try my best Tom Osborne voice.
We have fun in our cabin.
President Mars, members of the board, Superintendent recommends adoption of the following resolution, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the following change order and directs the Superintendent to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the board for Grant Middle School, it's a change number nine, it's on sixteen thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars in heat, since uh, it's a John Colton construction for um, the need to uh, reduce some column and beam locations um, due to existing conditions.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none?
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Blissett.
Aye.
Leowulf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
That is seven i-votes.
Alright, we'll move to twelve point four, approval of change orders for Franklin Middle School, Superintendent.
Mr. Shaver.
Again, uh, President Mars, members of the board, Superintendent recommends following resolution, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the following Ed change orders and directs the Superintendent to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the board. This was uh, there are three um, change orders for that project, number one, nineteen thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-one cents uh, for steel lintels that was not shown on the drawings, um, therefore they were bid. Frank, uh, the change order number two is an amount of eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-six cents and that was to remove, that was a request by the school district to remove the existing heating coils. We had originally wanted it to be left in, but uh, they were needed just to save a little money, but uh, after review that, I thought it was best to take them out. And then uh, change order three is an amount of nineteen thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty cents and that was uh, due to some tapered roof insulation that was not shown on the drawings and was required by the project for the roof to slow correct. Questions on those, I'll go to John Colton Construction.
What's a steel lintel?
It's a, it's part of the whole upper elbow of the windows.
So these drawings?
They, they were not on the structural drawings, so they were not bid. They, so they are here as a change order, uh, because they were, we had to put them in for a brick to fall down, um, so uh, they're added value to the project.
Is that something that's also going to be a change order that we'll see at some other middle schools if they're?
Yeah, no, those are all built out.
That was a unique ground, okay.
And uh, they didn't show, they didn't show it on the uh, on the roof drawings for the tapered roof insulation that are in, um, if they were in the bid, or if they are on the drawings, we would pay for them, so these are just added, so they have, you know, they were just paid on the designer's part, uh, they don't, they're, they're worth to correct the problems that's created us, um, of the material and installers.
Any motion? So moved.
Second. Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I mean, it's just typical that we see change orders along the way, right? I mean, I don't imagine any school is going to be immune. Uh, especially with renovations, um, where you're opening, uh, parts of buildings that haven't seen the day, decided to do it for a long time. Uh, I think we do keep track of our, our change orders. And, uh, um, large, uh, large projects, uh, like Grant Franklin, typically can see a ten percent change order. Working were at eight point three or, uh, or, uh, grant much lower on the board, three point four. There we, three, over down there. Frank, does that one work by nine? So like with Grant, we just approved the, uh, it looked like the ninth changed order. Is, is there a cap to how many change orders are allowed? Any change order cannot be over, uh, anything over ten thousand dollars is approved by the board. Uh, any change order that is ten percent of the, is mine change. If anything does ten percent contract sum, you can get, you know, you add. Accumulation of, um, of change orders, you know, there's a. So if we had a project that's, you want to add a addition to the addition, we'd be a lot of money, uh, we'd have to dip that out.
Would you like me to go ahead now? Yes.
Is there any further discussion?
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Blissette.
Aye.
Leowulf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
And seven i-votes.
Okay, moving to twelve point five, approval of change orders for Buckler Elementary, Superintendent.
Let's begin. In, uh, President Mars, members of the board, Superintendent recommends adoption of the following resolution. Therefore be resolved that the Board of Education approves the following change order directs the Superintendent to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the board. This is actually two change orders. One is approved, um, to, uh, deduct the chairlifts out of the, off, from, from the floor to the stage, um, and install the ramp instead, or installing ramp instead. Um, once, once we saw where the chairlifts were going to be, they were out and the impact it had on the gym floor, we chose to throw the ramp back to the stage instead. The other, and that's an amount of fourteen, that's a deduct of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars. So that offsets this, the next one of change order number six, the twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. As to, uh, uh, it provides some drywall underneath the, uh, drywall embil around the, on the bottom of the stairs, uh, dryers, cutting the stair landing, um, or ceiling and replaces the ceiling area, especially the abatement, the section of the ceiling that was in the abatement project was taken down by, taken rightfully, uh, taken down by the abatement contractor because it was inside the space. And, uh, so we were putting in.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Zimmers.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Blissette.
Aye.
Leowulf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
That is seven i-votes.
All right, moving on to twelve point six, approval of an addition to school board policy.
President Mars, members of the board, whereas the Board of Education of Springfield District one eighty-six maintains board policy manuals, uh, giving direction to the district. And whereas such policy and manuals reflect case law, legal rulings, legislation and district practice, now therefore be resolved that the board approves the attached policy relating to targeted school violence prevention programs. Um, Julie, heard if there's any discussion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Austin.
Aye.
Blissette.
Aye.
Leowulf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
That is seven i-votes.
All right, we'll move on to student discipline, twelve point seven, Superintendent.
President Bars, Mars and members of the board, it is my recommendation that it's the end of the meeting. That one eighth grade student be hereby expelled from further attendance at Franklin Middle School through the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year with a program. That one seventh grade student be hereby expelled from further attendance at Grant Middle School through the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year with a program. And that one sixth grade student be hereby expelled from further attendance at Jefferson Middle School through the end of the first semester of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year with a program. And that one seventh grade student be hereby expelled from further attendance at Jefferson Middle School through the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year with a program. And that two eighth grade students be hereby expelled from further attendance at Jefferson Middle School through the end of the first semester, twenty-two, twenty-three school year with a program.
Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Blissette.
Aye.
Leowulf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
That is seven i-votes.
All right, moving on to thirteen point one. Our next regular meeting will be on Monday, June the sixth, at five thirty PM for executive. Public session will begin at six thirty. Thirteen point two, upcoming district events, uh, May thirtieth, no school, holiday. June fourth, what are you doing on that day, Janice?
Graduating.
All right, fantastic. June tenth will be the last day of school.
We expect to see you there, Janice.
This Saturday at Butler School is their one-hundredth year celebration, uh, from nine to twelve. And we have former principal back there. So if you were a student there, taught there, whatever, show up because, you know, they're inviting, uh, former teachers, former administrators. It should be a fun, fun morning.
Yep, it's gonna be awesome.
Bobcats.
All right. Do any other board members have any, uh, business to discuss this evening?
I also just want to go on record, um, if we want to keep some more of these deductions for our change orders, I would like to offer ten dollars for the Lions logo in the middle of the Lower Nike Gym Floor, just throwing it out there.
Oh, I think there's some design personnel stuff.
There was, uh, and, and all, uh, all joking, though there was a lot of interest in that stuff over at Lane Fair when, uh, the tour groups were walking around. So everybody was.
Mr. Rosen's working on a plan.
Spotting that stuff up, so.
All right, well, seeing no further business to come before the board, time's now eight twenty-eight. We are adjourned.